Okay, everybody. Let's bring our meeting to order. Last meeting, we had a little bit of trouble with folks who couldn't hear. I just want to make sure everybody knows we do have a limited number of hearing devices at the front desk. If you need a hearing device to help boost the volume, please to see people at the front desk and they can lend one out to you. With that said, let's all stand and salute our flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite in justice.
Very good. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
Councilmember Bill Lopena.
Present.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Engler.
Here.
There's no request for continuance, so we'll go straight to our special presentations. We have a very, very good presentation about our library. Forty years our library has been in position, and I would like to turn it over to our very own Jennifer Patterson to give us a little presentation on what the library has been doing and what they'll be doing going forward.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, management, and staff. This evening, I am here to discuss the 40th anniversary of the Grant R. Brimhall Library. Get ready to dust off your leg warmers and jumpstart your DeLoreans because we are celebrating our 40th anniversary by taking you back to the 80s. September 19 through 24 is 80s Week at the Library. We officially kick off our celebratory week on Wednesday, September 21st, from 5:30 to 7:30 with the opening ceremony. Guest speakers for the evening are Mayor Bob Engler, City Manager Emeritus Grant R. Brimhall, and myself. We will be unveiling our commemorative 40th Anniversary Library card. We held a design contest for the card, and the community voted on a winner. The winner will be announced at the card unveiling. We will have anniversary cake for everyone to enjoy, and there will also be a fun surprise that you don't want to miss. Additionally, this day marks the start of our Oral History Project in partnership with the Stagecoach Inn Museum. Volunteers from the Stagecoach will be available by appointment to record your memories of the library. Library staff will continue this project at the conclusion of the 40th Anniversary events. Thursday, September 22 is Retro Game Day from 12 to 7:30. We will have retro board games set up throughout the library, including giant versions of Uno, Jenga, Connect Four, and Sari. Our biggest attraction for the day is the arcade. Our community room has been turned into a replica of the Tilt Arcade that used to be in the Oaks Mall. We will have all of your favorite throwback arcade games, and you won't need any quarters to play. The last hour of the arcade opening day is reserved for the 18 and up crowd, so that you can have some childhood fun without the watchful eyes of your kiddos. The arcade will be open through Saturday, September 24. Friday, September 23 is our 1982 Movie Marathon from 10 to 6. These movies will be shown in the library on our 16-foot blow-up screen. We are showing Annie, E.T., Rocky III, and Poltergeist in that order. All of these events culminate with our Ruby Red Celebration on Saturday, September 24 from 11 to 4. This will be an action-packed day with something for everyone in and outside of the library. In the parking lot, we will have live music by 80s cover band Bad Habit from 12 to 2, complimentary refreshments from the Habit Burger Grill and Kona Ice While Supplies Last, and the Athens Services Bounce House. Inside the library, we will have activities for kids and teens, including DIY tote bags and buttons. Robin Britt from Community Conscience will be making balloon animals from 2 to 4. Lastly, we will have a community services fair with 11 participating organizations. Library visitors will receive a community organization's passport. Collect visas by visiting each community organization's table. Collect all 11 visas and turn in your passport to be entered into an opportunity drawing to win one of eight Kindle Fires. The 40th Anniversary events are generously sponsored monetarily by the Thousand Oaks Library Foundation and in kind by the Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library. Thank you to our support organizations and library staff for all of your hard work towards
Thank you, Jennifer. It's really exciting to have our library up in service for 40 years now.
I wasn't done. I have one more slide.[1364.13][1364.13](LAUGHTER). Come on, you gotta let me give them the kicker here.[1369.75][1369.75](LAUGHTER).
Oh, you're not done. Please go forward.
Last one, I promise. We will have 80s-themed giveaways all week long, and you may even hear your favorite 80s song in the background when you visit the library. This presentation in no way encompasses everything that we have going on, so to see it all, you must come to the library next week. The Thousand Oaks Library cordially invites our community to attend these free, family-friendly, and fun-filled events to celebrate the 40th anniversary of the Grant R. Brimhall Library.
Is it okay to speak?[1419.03][1419.03](LAUGHTER). I just want to acknowledge that the library is called the Grant Brimhall Library. We just happen to have Grant Brimhall in the audience today, and if I could just have Grant stand up and...[1434.92][1434.92](APPLAUSE). Through the activities of people like Grant, that library was built, and through the activities of the people I will acknowledge in just one second, it's continued to flourish. So, where did Jennifer go? Oh, I'm real happy that the library has 40 years, but this next group, the Friends of the Library, are working on 60. So, let me call down Rosanna Guerra and Sue Soy to come down to the podium.[1472.13][1472.13](APPLAUSE).
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.[1488.83][1488.83](LAUGHTER).
Well, very good. Thank you for being here tonight. It's really...I was discussing earlier with everybody that I spoke with that it's exciting to have volunteers who have been so involved in the community for so long. It's part of what makes Thousand Oaks so special, and I wanted to thank you for being part of that. We do have a little bit here to read, so I'll read through it. And as I said, 60 years ago, a small group of library supporters were formed with the mission of raising funds for the library through the sale of used books. Through their dedicated fundraising, the Friends of Thousand Oaks Library have ensured that the library has a robust funding program for technology and materials. In addition, the Friends support literary efforts throughout the Canejo Valley by regular donations of free books to other area nonprofits such as Safe Passages. Decades of successful fundraising have been made possible by this all-volunteer workforce. It's with great pleasure that I can present this proclamation to the Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library for 60 years of service.[1564.25][1564.25](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Thank you. Now I can speak.[1587.53][1587.53](LAUGHTER). Thank you so much for this honor. My name's Rosanna Guerra, and I'm a board member with Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library, an all-volunteer-run nonprofit organization established in the Canejo Valley in 1961, before some of you were born. On behalf of our organization, I want to thank you for this honor and the privilege to be a supporter of the Thousand Oaks Public Library with its two wonderful branches serving the public in our city. Our purpose is to raise funds to support and assist the library in its work. It's safe to say that we have raised more than $1 million since our inception in 1961. We help the library promote learning, literacy, and cultural knowledge across the Canejo Valley, and we can do this in one of three ways: the sale of gently-used books, DVDs, CDs, and now vinyl in both of our bookshops at the Grant Brimhall and Newberry Park Libraries, our over 350 membership contributions and growing, and three, the generous donations of our community. However, all of this would not be possible without the commitment of our volunteers, some who have been volunteering for over 20 years. Finally, we would like to extend an invitation to City Council and to all of our community to visit the grand reopening of our bookshop on September 19 at 4:30, restyled and reorganized. Again, thank you for this recognition of our work, and you can count on us to continue for at least the next 60 years. So, thank you again.[1697.33][1697.33](APPLAUSE). Oh, yeah, that would be great.
If I could invite the council forward, we'll take some pictures.
Come on down.[1714.13][1714.13](LAUGHTER).
Thank you all. Thanks to the Friends for coming tonight. We do have our public comments section now. We do have our public comments section now coming up. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
We do not.
Very good. No public speakers for our public comments? So, we can go move on to our next, our next item, which is our consent calendar, items that we have on our consent. So, Madam Clerk?
No need to introduce.
No need. Very good. Then, any of my colleagues would like to pull items. Mr. McNamie?
Yes, I'd like to pull Item D, as in David, and E as in Edward.
D, David, E, Edward. Any other items? Colleagues?
Move the balance if there's no other items.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0?
Very good. Go ahead, Mr. McNamie.
A question regarding the calendar. It was brought up at one of the previous council meetings, and an excellent question was that the city council meetings and the school board meetings occur on the same Tuesday evenings, making it difficult for someone who has interests in both meetings to be present at both meetings. Is that, or do we have any conflicts occurring with this 2023 schedule, and if so, perhaps 2024 schedule, we can clean that up a little bit, so that way people who are interested can attend both?
Yeah, so this has been a topic that's been discussed in the past quite a bit. For us in this venue, as I think most will know, this is a multi-use venue, so this is a performing arts venue, meaning that it is booked out, and as you might imagine, the most prominent nights for booking run Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, that has, since this venue's inception, that's been the focus. Planning Commission on Monday night, we lift, you may not know, but this entire apparatus lives underneath here on hydraulics, and so we lift it all up here and set this all up, our team does, and they do it in concert with Planning Commission in order to be cost-effective at that. It also allows Jonathan Surratt to book out the facility on the remainder. So, we do our level best on the calendar to put in all the multitude of things that are there, including annual conferences that the council attends, which is National League of Cities Conference and the National League of Cities Lobbying Trip in DC, spring breaks, fall breaks, all those different factors, and so there are some inevitable conflicts. That is certainly one of them, but we do not have a flexibility in our venue in order to accomplish doing it a different night.
I was just thinking, alternate Tuesdays, school board on one Tuesday and we're on the other Tuesday, that's what I was looking for, but maybe 2024, we can have some flexibility. Thank you. Mayor, that was the only question I have. If none of my other council members have any concerns with that, I was, do we want to, do you want to move D?
Any other discussion on Item D? Very good. I need a motion in.
Can I make a motion and move Item D?
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Given that I will not attend a single one of those, I'm totally okay with it.
Councilmember?
Not here next year.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Are we voting on whether we're absolutely sure we're going to be here next year or not? Is that the criterion? I'll give a tentative yes.
You're, you're, both of my colleagues are correct. There are three of us who, this might be a moot point, but yes, I'll vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Item number E, Edward.
Let me announce that the vote, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Item E, Edward.
I, City Council, I believe this is when I need to recuse myself. City Attorney is shaking her head, so I'm going to step out for a moment while you move forward with it. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have no problem with Item E unless someone else does all move or approve it.
Very good. Let's, I'll just explain briefly to everybody, when, when, when an item directly affects a city council member, that member may not vote on, on it, so this particular thing, we have a slurry in road repair that's occurring near a council member's home. Very good. Let's have our vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember McNamie recusing.
Can one of the clerks please let Mr. McNamie know that he can come back? Very good. Our next, our next item is our public hearings, Item 8. If our clerk can please open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, CDBG Program Year 2021-22 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Zero individuals have presented speaker cards.
Very good. There's no speaker cards on this, so we'll go straight to Lynn O'Shea, who can give our presentation on our CDBG funding.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is the annual review of the city's Community Development Block Grant Program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The report also includes the Coronavirus Cares Act funding for the CDBGCV program. The program year was from July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022. Staff requests city council approval to submit the CAEPR report to HUD. Presentation will discuss the regular annual CDBG first, and then the CDBGCV Coronavirus Last year, about $700,000 were available, which included prior-year funding and the CDBG 2021 grant. The CDBG funds were allocated to three areas, including the 2020 and 2021 community projects, public services, and administration. The city expanded about $500,000 in CDBG funds with an ending balance of $200,000. The city's primary activity last year was housing rehabilitation. CDBG funds benefited 143 low-income units at the Los Arboles and Shadow Hills Apartments. The mobile home rehabilitation activities with Safe and Habitat for Humanity rehabbed 27 owner-occupied low-income units and expanded about $100,000 in CDBG funds last year. $59,000 of unspent 2020 funds are available for next year's action plan allocation. The SAFE program is focused on coaches owned by seniors needing HVAC and window replacements, while the Habitat program involves volunteer labor with painting, grabbar installation, stairs, ramps, and deck repairs. Habitat's program also included walk-in showers and window replacements. CDBG expanded $74,000. Six public service programs served over 2,000 low-income Thousand Oaks residents. $11,000 was not spent by June 30th, and is available for next year's action plan. Administrative costs of $88,000 included staffing, public notices, overhead costs, and the Fair Housing Contract with the County of Ventura. $23,000 is available for next year's action plan. Table summary shows the city expended about $500,000 in CDBG program year 2021-22 with an ending balance of $200,000. Most grantees spent their funds in a timely manner. The remaining balance includes one open activity with Habitat for Humanity. This past April, city council reallocated $44,000. After a needs assessment and public review, city council will have the opportunity to reallocate $93,000, together with next year's CDBG action plan in spring of 2023. The presentation will now focus on CDBG Cares Act funding for the past two years. In 2020, HUD provided to the city a 1.1 million CDBGCV grant. HUD requires all grant activities to prevent, prepare for, or respond to coronavirus. With the Economic Development Program ending in June 2021, the city's primary CDBGCV activities were COVID public services. Harbor House and Lutheran Social Services received CDBGCV public service funding to support coronavirus-related activities and served 91 homeless and 34 low-income Thousand Oaks residents. Through amendments, the city transferred about $100,000 of available funds to other project activities. This past April, after a needs assessment and 30-day public review, city council approved the substantial amendment transferring available funds from economic development and administration and creating two new COVID-19 public service activities with Turning Point Foundation and Lutheran Social Services. These homeless programs will start on July, or have started on July 1st. City Council Resolution 2020-13 allows the city manager to approve minor funding revisions. In June, the available funds of $32,000 was transferred to COVID-19 administration as a minor amendment. Table summary shows the city expended about $900,000 in CDBGCV funds in two years with an ending balance of about $250,000. City staff anticipates all CDBGCV funds will be spent by June 2023, and the next year's CAEPR will report these activities. Staff is recommending that city council approve the program year 2021-22 CAEPR for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This concludes the slide presentation, and staff is available to respond to your questions.
Thank you very much. We do not have any public speakers on this item, so we'll go straight to council questions, I would think. We have, as well as Ms. O'Shea, we do have Kelvin Parker and Ian Holt for answering any questions. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Claudia.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. I just have a quick question on the, on the staff report where it says that public services on page three, that two homeless were served, but there were more than two on page three of the staff report. I'm probably not reading it correctly, or it's a typo, I don't know.
Oh, yes, so out of the six program activities, five are considered non-homeless program activities, and one program activity with the RAIN facility with the County of Ventura, that's the only activity that's related to homelessness.
So, it's two homeless agencies, not two homeless persons?
Two homeless persons.
Oh, it is two homeless persons.
In the RAIN facility. They were housed at RAIN.
Very good. I know that Westminster Free Clinic does serve more than, I mean, it does serve several, several homeless persons, and I have to say that that particular organization is absolutely phenomenal in the way it provides the, in delivering health care to the most vulnerable population of our community. It's absolutely astounding what they're able to do, so I just wanted to give them a special mention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill de la Peña. Any other comments, questions? Very good. Oh, sorry, Mr. Adam.
Thanks, Mayor. I see that, again, this year, we made some substantial contributions, if that's the right word, to some of our mobile home parks through Habitat for Humanity and through Senior Alliance for Empowerment, which was founded by Kathy Goodspeed and Jim?
Wolf.
Wolf, thank you. Almost forgot that name, which has been a wonderful organization, by the way. And if I'm not mistaken, we have a consistent track record every year of including our mobile home parks under the community project category, do we not?
Yes, we've been funding mobile home rehab programs for several years.
For seven years?
For several.
Oh, several.
Several years.
Okay. Well, since we have a lot of mobile home park residents in the audience, I thought maybe, how, how long have we been dedicating community development block grant funds to mobile home parks?
So, for community development block grants, we've been funding this program since 2013.
Oh, really?
And since 2013, we've spent approximately a million dollars, and we rehabbed 127 mobile homes.
Okay. So, for the last nine years, a million dollars for rehabbing the homes.
Yes.
And that could mean new roofs, right? I presume?
So, some of them received new roofs. Yes, that's correct.
Things like that. Yeah.
Water heaters.
Go ahead, yeah.
Water heaters.
Water heaters? Yeah, we've seen that, haven't we?
And heaters, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, well, that's good. I just thought maybe you folks would be interested in that. It's a, it's an excellent way to keep our folks in their affordable homes. Thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Very good. I believe this is a receive and file. I'm sorry, we need to close our public hearing, so.
I can make a motion if there...
First, we need to close our public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Hearing is closed.
Very good. And I do need, I thought this was just a receive and file, but it is a, a vote, so let's have a motion.
I move to approve the staff recommendation.
Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Very good. Now, we're going to our next item, which is Item 10A. Just last, last week, or last two weeks ago, we, we had a, a discussion on this, and I wanted to make sure that I noticed during that discussion, I offered any hearing devices for people, because I know that was an issue for some folks. I want to remind everybody, because we do have people online and on TV and everything else, to try to speak into the microphones, so we can make sure we capture everybody's comments, so we can hear everybody. And then, because we will have several speakers tonight, I wanted to just remind everybody that, you know, you can feel good about what someone says, or you can feel bad about what someone says, but we try to have a decorum that allows everybody to have their say, so clapping and that sort of thing detracts from that. So, I would ask that everybody refrain from clapping or booing, or whatever, whatever the movement moves you. And then, we do have, I think it's 12 or 13 speakers so far.
Twelve.
So, we are able to do three minutes per person, so that people will be able to get some, some of their, their information out. So, that's our, that's our, been our long-term determination on how many minutes people get. If it gets to be more... If it gets to be more, then we have to lower it, because you can imagine if we had 60 speakers, it might take a while. So with that, I will open the, the hearing. We do have Patrick Heher, who's going to be doing our, our presentation. So if Mr. Heher and Kelvin Parker could please go ahead and do our presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council and public. We are taking a moment here to bring up our presentation. But while we do that, we're almost there. One second. There we go. So this evening, we'll be discussing the Mobile Home Park Rent Stabilization Ordinance. As many of you may know, the city of Thousand Oaks has codified the Mobile Home Park regulations that regulate, among other things, rent in the city's mobile home parks. The city currently has eight, eight parks. Five are restricted to seniors. Three are family parks, or in other words, they do not have resident restrictions. This past year, our residents and business owners have experienced high inflation. The cost of everything from food to gas to services and equipment have increased significantly. Pursuant to the city's rent stabilization ordinance, the mobile home park owners are legally entitled to raise rents on all mobile home park residents, a maximum of 8.5% beginning in November. This increase is much higher than years past, where increases were anywhere from 1% to 3% on average. Several residents from mobile home parks have reached out to City Council requesting that the council modify the current rent stabilization ordinance in order to reduce the upcoming rent increase. Many residents also spoke at the last City Council meeting during public comment and made the same request. Since the matter was not on the agenda, the City Council could not discuss these requests. Therefore, the city manager has placed a department report on tonight's agenda for the City Council to discuss, and if appropriate, give staff direction. We will discuss the history of mobile home parks and rent stabilization regulations in the city. Although the city initially adopted regulations in 1980, they were not codified until 1996. Tonight, our discussion will outline the regulations adopted in 1996, 2011, and the current regulations in place adopted in 2021. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Heher.
Thank you, Kelvin. In 1996, the city codified its regulations pertaining to mobile home parks. The regulations included a rent, a rent stabilization component. Key components of the 1996 ordinance are as follows. It authorized automatic adjustments in rent based on a formula set forth in the ordinance. Thus, park owners were legally entitled to raise rents on mobile home park units on an annual basis pursuant to this formula. The annual rent adjustment formula included an index for increases. The index was set forth as 75% of the Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers for the year ending April 1st, rounded to its nearest 10th. The formula also capped the increase at a maximum of 7%. The index was applied to a base rent. As set forth in the 1996 ordinance, the base rent was set at 1986, the year 1986. Thus, rent increases were not calculated against the current year's rent, but against rent charged in 1986 for most residents. The 1996 ordinance also allowed two additional types of increases based on, one, capital improvements made by a park owner. This would be for such things as paint or asphalt rehabilitation, recreational improvements, things of that nature. And a second one would be a just and reasonable return on the property investment. These two types of adjustments were not automatic. If a park owner wanted to increase rents under either of these provisions, they were required to submit an application to the city for consideration and decision. Criteria was set forth in the 1996 ordinance outlining what types of capital improvement qualified and how much money spent on improvements would be amortized and imposed on the residents. For a just and reasonable return application, the 1996 ordinance set forth various factors to be considered by the city, including rents received, expenses, taxes, and other criteria. In 2010, so we're moving to 2010, three mobile home park owners submitted applications for rent increases under the Just and Reasonable Return and Capital Improvement provisions of the 1996 ordinance. The requested increases were significant. For Thunderbird Mobile Home Park, the owner sought a $332 per month increase. And the owner of Ranch Mobile Home Park sought at a increase of $621 per month. Now, these applications were considered by the city's Rent Adjustment Commission, or RAC. The hearings were set, held over several days, and included expert testimony in addition to public comments by the residents of the parks. The city itself hired an independent consultant as an expert to make recommendations to the RAC. The city, during this hearing, the city consultant recommended significant reductions to the Just and Reasonable Return applications, which were ultimately adopted by the RAC. For Thunderbird, the increase was reduced from $332.52 per month to $62 per month, phased in over a two-year period. For the ranch, the increase was reduced from $620.11 per month to $191.95 per month, phased over a seven-year period. Despite the significant reduction, residents from both parks expressed serious concern over the increases. The park owners also disagreed with reductions and appealed the decision to City Council. Prior to City Council's consideration of these applications, the City Council authorized former Mayor Annie Fox to facilitate discussions between the park owners and the residents to try to resolve the issues related to the rents and also related to the potential closure and subdivision of two other mobile home parks in the city. Mayor Fox proposed a confidential mediation with the park owners. Ranch Mobile Home Park residents declined to participate in the mediation because of the confidentiality requirement. For the residents, each resident agency selected various representatives, except for Ranch Mobile Home Park, who did not participate. After numerous meetings were held, the parties agreed to changes to the 1996 ordinance. The mediated agreement, so after all this mediation took place between the park owners and the residents, that agreement was codified in the 2011 Rent Stabilization Ordinance. It's important to note that the city did not create these provisions. They were mutually agreed upon by both the park owners and the residents during this mediation time period. The pertinent provisions are as follows. The park owners agreed to a special, one-time supplemental rent adjustment in the amount of $100 to be phased in over seven years at $16.67 per month. This one-time adjustment was in lieu of the Just and Reasonable Return applications. The park owners also agreed to a 10-year moratorium on additional Just and Reasonable Return rent adjustment applications. The park owners also agreed to a 10-year moratorium on applications to subdivide a mobile home park into four sale lots. Now, since Ranch Mobile Home Park residents did not participate in the mediation, the RAC's decision on the park owners' Just and Reasonable Return application was codified. Those residents would, would incur an increase of $191.95 per month, phased in over seven years at $27.42 per month. Although the ranch residents did not participate in the mediation, they still benefited from some of the other provisions in the mediated agreement. The park owners were required to offer a subsidy program for income-qualified residents and were prohibited from evicting a qualified resident due to inability to pay the one-time supplemental rent increase. The parties also agreed to revisions to the provisions related to capital improvement rent adjustments. The parties agreed to a new formula for the annual rent adjustments. Again, the 1996 formula was 75% of CPI, capped at 7% with a base year of 1986. Under the revision formula, the residents and park owners agreed to allow 100% of CPI with no floor and no cap starting in 2017. The parties also set the base year at 2005 instead of 1986 and agreed that beginning in 2011, at every five years thereafter, the base year rent would increase by five years. Thus, in 2011, the base year was set at 2005. In 2016, the base year changed to be set at 2010, and so forth. Following adoption of the 2011 Rent Stabilization Ordinance, residents of the Ranch Mobile Home Park sued the city alleging fair housing and constitutional due process violations. They sought to invalidate the 2011 ordinance and requested millions of dollars in damages. The city spent more than $1 million defending the lawsuit, and after several years of litigation, successfully defended the validity of the 2011 ordinance. Significantly, if the ranch residents had been successful in validating, in, in, in validating the 2011 ordinance, rent control for all residents in all mobile home parks in the city would have ended. At a minimum, the 10-year moratorium agreement by the park owners to not seek Just and Reasonable adjustments and not subdivide a mobile home park would have been nullified. In 2021, the 10-year moratorium on Just and Reasonable Return applications and on subdivisions of the mobile home parks expired. Prior to its expiration, staff brought a cleanup ordinance to the City Council for adoption. The revisions made were to ensure the regulations complied with state law. It also addressed expiration of the 10-year moratorium on Just and Reasonable Return adjustments, and it dissolved the Rent Adjustment Commission and assigned all duties to the Planning Commission. Most significant, the annual rent adjustment formula created and agreed upon by the residents and the park owners in 2011 did not change. Based on the rent adjustment formula set forth in the Rent Stabilization Ordinance, park owners are legally entitled to an 8.5% rent increase starting November 1, 2022. Notice of this authorized rent adjustment was sent to the park owners in May as required by the Rent Stabilization Ordinance. After that, the city began receiving calls from concerned residents regarding the upcoming rent adjustment, and many also spoke during the last City Council meeting during public comments. They expressed concern regarding the upcoming increase in rents and requested that the city modify the current rent ordinance to reduce the rent by either reducing the CPI percentage or placing a cap on the CPI. Prior to tonight's meetings, the city staff reached out to each mobile home park owner to inquire regarding their intention to impose the maximum annual adjustment as permitted under the ordinance. In every park except one, the park owners will increase rents in accordance with the rent adjustment formula set forth in the ordinance. Staff has also brought this report to you to outline the history of the city's rent stabilization regulations and receive direction from council if deemed appropriate. The regulations themselves are complex, and most of them are based on an agreement between the mobile park owners and the mobile park residents. Pertinent to tonight's discussion, the annual rent adjustment formula that authorizes up to 100% of CPI with no cap has been in place since 2017 and was negotiated and agreed to by the residents and park owners in 2011. This formula was not created by the city. The city simply codified the agreement and the agreed-upon formula in 2011, and it remains the same today. The current rent stabilization ordinance reflects the terms of the mediated agreement. While there have been requests to modify the ordinance to reduce the upcoming annual rent adjustment, there are legal risks associated with such action. These lawsuits can be very costly and ultimately may also threaten the validity of the ordinance in its entirety. Based on that presentation, staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Mr. Adams, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, well, a lot of this happened kind of a long time ago, about 11 years ago. And so from what I gather during that time period, there was an element of uncertainty that existed for mobile home park residents, brought on by owners asking for Just and Reasonable Return applications to increase rents very substantially, brought on by owners asking for capital improvement adjustments to increase rents substantially, brought on by one mobile home park wanted to convert for sale, and brought on by another mobile home park wanted to close altogether. So within this backdrop of uncertainty, I think that's how the mediation evolved, whereby the owners and the residents were brought together.
That is correct.
And the city acted strictly as a mediator, and they used then Mayor Fox to mediate between the two groups.
That is correct. And it's important to note that when you have a mediation, it's confidential. So the, the purpose of that is everyone can be candid in these discussions. And based on my experience, and I'm sure Ms. Noonan's experience in doing mediations, you certainly have this goal, this goal to try to resolve the conflict between two parties. And that's what the goal was here, and obviously it was successful with the codification of their agreement.
Yeah. And then as a side note, I don't know if it's all that relevant now, but ranch decided to drop out and pursue their own course. And that was kind of an expensive avenue for everybody, but ultimately, the Rent Stabilization Ordinance was upheld, which was a good thing. But as far as the city's place in all this, we didn't, we didn't suggest any of these different routes to go. This was between the residents and the owners, and we merely mediated the final outcome.
That is correct. We, we certainly spent, the city spent a lot of time, hired its own consultant, its own expert, an expert who was well-renowned in the industry. This is a time period of multiple cities and across the state having these issues developed between 2005 and 2013, 14 was a huge time period for these types of issues. But after all that work on the hearings and the testimony and the record, when it came to, before your body to, and to ensure you do the next step, there was a decision made to try to mediate this and see if they can get resolution, and that's exactly what happened.
So it was an agreement between the residents and the owners.
That is correct.
And each side seemed to get a little and give a little.
That's exactly what happens during mediation.
The owners said, okay, we're, we'll put a moratorium on Just and Reasonable Returns for 10 years. And in return, the residents were not subject to that. On the other hand, the residents agreed to the CPI business. and agreed to a one-time rent supplement. So it was kind of a back-and-forth situation, and that expired just fairly recently, last year. However, the Rent Stabilization Ordinance is still in effect.
That is correct.
And the only thing that isn't in effect is the moratorium, which has been lifted and could theoretically mean that owners could now apply for just and reasonable returns if they chose to. But we haven't gotten any apps for that, have we?
This time, no. I think it's important to note that in 2021, when the 10-year time period sunsetted, it was important for the city to bring it back because we needed to make sure that it was updated with state regulations, as most mobile home park issues are regulated by the state. And of course, we also needed to make sure that we moved the moratorium requirement that was in that agreement because it did sunset.
Yeah, but to date, no applications for just and reasonable returns.
At this time, I'm not aware of any. Correct.
We're trying to hold to our three-question rule.
Oh, I'm just creating a historical narrative.
Thank you. Thank you.
But I'm done now.
Thank you.
But thank you for reminding me. Thank you.
Ms. Pildelapena.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. So this agreement, as we know, was negotiated 10 years ago, 11 years ago. And at that time, nobody could foresee an 8.5% increase in CPI. So my question is, it was mentioned in the staff report that social security is going up, and so therefore, it shouldn't be that much of a hit to the pocketbooks. But social, I mean, that is what was being said. So the amount of increases on the social security check are very different from the percentage on the actual rent of that land. So the two, to me, are not comparable. You cannot compare apples to apples. And my question is, could we renegotiate?
So certainly renegotiation, if you're talking about some type of mediation, is an option that could be considered. I will caution you that when we moved to mediation as part of this 2010, 2011 action, there were so many things that were happening with the hearings that we had and decisions that were previously made by the RAC Commission and bringing it to council that there was this momentum to have everyone come to the table. And it's also important to note that when you do a mediation, it really is important to have all the parties who are involved in this. So all the different residents with their representation and all the park owners with their representation need to be at the table. Because as we saw, even though when you do a mediation, whether it's resolved or not, you do a confidentiality agreement because you want to make sure that you can discuss openly that various issues that people have on this topic. And we saw from that one case that that one park that did not participate was the one that decided to move forward and sue the city on their various claims that we, of course, defended both at trial and at appellate court and were successful in those.
My second question is, the, there was a statement made at the last council meeting that there are only 15 cities in California where the CPI is this high, and Thousand Oaks is one of them. I'm not exactly sure what the actual reference was, but how does Thousand Oaks fare in comparison to other cities?
Well, maybe Ms. Ashida has that information. I will just say this, that again, it's very important to note that in our particular case, we had an agreement that set forth the components of this formula. In every city, every case, there's a different form, there can be different formulas that are applied. What the courts really want to make sure is that there is a formula, it is applied appropriately, there's evidence to support it, things of that nature. And in our case, if you, it's important to note that in 2011 to 2017, the CPI was 75% of the CPI. And then in 2017, pursuant to this negotiated agreement, that's when it went to 100% of CPI. So that was something that was negotiated. So when we talk about other formulas, yes, they're out there. The concern would be that this was, we're focused on ours because that was what negotiated, and that's what's on, that's what's before us, that's what we have to work with. The other issue is, you brought up the social security. I just want to make a point that it's difficult also, apples and oranges for each person, because you can have a new mobile home and bring, as a coach owner, and bring it into a park, and now you're paying market rate for that time period when you, right when you move in. So you have to go back through the history. Some individuals have been there for a very long time, and so they have a different rate based on someone who just moved in three to five years ago, for example, because that's just how the formula works.
And my last question for now, the third question is that obviously, we all have received phone calls here from the residents. And for many, 8.5% increase is really unsustainable. And when you get a call from someone on the verge of tears saying, please help me because I will be homeless, we also have to consider we are dealing with a homelessness issue. And what steps can we take in order to perhaps renegotiate before some of the residents that have been in their homes for so long will be added to the long list of homeless and unsheltered persons in our city? So I'm sure we will have more discussion, but to me, it is not an option. The status quo is not an option. And I would certainly want to pursue some sort of negotiation or discussion or start a talk with the landlords and see if they're open to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please. Just a reminder, we try to not have the clapping, the things I thought, although obviously, some things you'll agree with, some things you won't. Mr. McNamee.
Actually, Mr. Mayor answered the questions, so I'm good. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Jones?
No, I want to wait to hear from the people in the audience.
Very good. I do have a couple of questions. A little tag along with what Ms. Pildelapena asked, I think. If we were to reopen this ordinance and get the people together, get the residents together, get the owners together, is there some way to zipper it only to talk about this rent increase? Or are all items going to be on the table?
All items are probably going to be on the table because when you, you have to bring everybody to the table. I think, as I said earlier, it's imperative. In fact, I would be bold to say that if you don't have everyone participating, then you have a problem right off the bat. So you need to make sure that you would have all participants, both all owners and all tenant representatives at the table. If you don't have that, it's extremely difficult. We also reached out to all the park owners, as noted in the staff report, about the CPI for this year. And as Ms. Pildelapena mentioned, 8.5%, it's a big hit for them, and we understand that. Inflation has hit the city, hit the state, hit the nation. And we have increases in rent, both for, you know, market-rate apartments, all kinds of things that we see with food and with products, et cetera. So we're all feeling that impact. And in particular, this case, the CPI for the last 10 years hasn't been 8.5%. It's been 1, 2, 3. I think last year was, or two years ago, was 3.8%. And then we have this big hit. And so we're hoping, if you look at the economy, you're hoping that that drops again next year. Again, it's very difficult in this time to predict what would happen. But this is why this year is such an anomaly, because it went so high up for this one period of time.
It looked like in 2011, when the Rent Stabilization Ordinance was rehashed, that there was quite a bit of horse trading, and I haven't talked, I wasn't around in those days, so I don't know exactly what happened. It sounded like horse trading was going on where the, obviously, the renters wanted some guarantees of a lower rate. But then the owners came in with a sunset on the 75% of CPI and everything in exchange for something else. Can you go a little bit more into that?
Actually, I can. I'm not sure if Ms. Noonan can. The mediation itself was confidential, and I actually did not participate in the mediation itself. What I want to point out, though, is that based upon all that negotiation with Andy Fox as a mediator, they came to an agreement, and the agreement is what we have, that we know happened. So it's hard to say what happened with the, as you said, horse trading and both back and forth. Obviously, that went on. But as to the mediation itself, that was confidential, except for the agreement. Once the agreement was made, that comes to council. And then council's action was to adopt an ordinance to reflect that negotiated agreement with all these different parts. And again, the formulas that you can use can vary, but this is the formula that was agreed to by the park owners and the tenants, and that's what's qualified, and that was what was qualified in 2011.
And my last third question is, there was a slide that mentioned that you have gone out and spoken with the park owners and that they were firm. Can you elaborate a little bit on what firm means? Are they open at all to discussing this, or is it completely, there's no door open?
I personally did not speak to them. I would say that from my understanding is this, that they were asked about the 8.5%. We know that one park owner has said that they are not going to ask for 8.5. They're going to ask for 6, but the other ones have said, we're going to go with what the ordinance says, which is within their right, within the regulation, within the ordinance. But it's also important to note that this is a 10-year time period, okay, with this negotiated time period. And so there were give and take over this 10-year period, some of the things that they could not do. For example, they could not ask for a, they cannot apply for a just and reasonable application. They could not say, you know what, I don't want to have this. I'm going to go through the very difficult process, but a process to make it for sale, for example, a subdivide. That was something that they gave up for that 10-year period of time. And I just mentioned that because it is something that you would think would be negotiated when a property owner says, I'm going to not be able to do an action that I normally could do, but I'm not going to do it for this 10-year period of time. In lieu of that, though, there are some other considerations, right? There's considerations back and forth. I think what I would say at the end of this is that Andy Fox, as you all know, is a very successful mediator. And he went to work with staff and consultants and both park owners and residents. And he spent a number of hours, days, over a period of time to come up with this negotiated agreement. And frankly, I think it saved a lot of difficult decisions later on because we already had the RAC decisions already that was going to be before the council. And so with that, it was something of, I think, a positive thing to come up with the ordinance based on that agreed-to change to the formula.
Thank you. That's my third question. Appreciate it. Mr. Adam, you did have your hand up.
Well, the issue of social security came up, I think it did, didn't it? And I know this year, I think it was increased 5.9%, which didn't cover inflation, but it was the biggest increase in 40 years. The good news, if there is any, in this whole situation is the CPI was announced today at 8.3. Came down a little bit, not as much as the Federal Reserve would have liked. So now we're talking next year, 8% to 10% social security increase, and some people are calling for 11%, which would be by far the biggest increase. On an average social security recipient, I'm reading another 160, 170 a month. So we'll have to see if that comes about. I mean, ideally, the Federal Reserve would get inflation under control, which is they're desperately trying to do. That's why they keep raising interest rates. So we'll have to see how that all plays out. But I don't know if any of you know this or not, but the state of California is offering a tax refund as well, calling it a inflation relief for people that have filed. You're looking at an extra $39 a month for married couples, 100. And if you haven't filed because you didn't make enough income, so you didn't have to file, there's a supplemental security income state supplemental program that would get you. You know, I got that wrong. The refund is 350 for singles, 700 for married. And if you didn't file, you can qualify for an extra 40 bucks a month. And if you're married, an extra 100. So the state of California is trying to provide inflation relief as well as social security. Whether it works or not, it just depends on where inflation is going to go in the next couple of years.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? Very good. We do have.
Well, I get mixed up between your statements.
Quite a few public speakers. I believe we have, let me check here real quick. About 15 or so public speakers. So. Let me try there. It is again. Loose wire. Very good. We do have some public speakers. I'll call your name. I'll call a couple of names. And then if you could come up to the podium and then, you know, be ready to go. Our first speaker tonight is Luann Christie, followed by Karen Haskin and Gary Barnett. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Honorable City Council members. My name is Luann Christie, and I have been a homeowner at Thunderbird Oaks for the past five years. I'm asking each of you to listen with an open mind, with open minds, and perhaps even put yourself in our position while this topic is being addressed. You're right. There for the past 10 years, there has been a Rent Stabilization Ordinance deal in place that has served both the homeowners and the park owners as well. In December 2019, I became concerned about the rent stabilization ending, and I contacted Tracy Noonan. And while she did not respond to me due to being out of the office, Kevlin Parker did, and he assured me nothing would happen or change without meetings between the city, the landowners, and the homeowners. Perhaps now, with so many new homeowners in all of the mobile home park communities, what was agreed on and put into place 10 years ago should be revisited, reviewed, and renegotiated. The demographics in Thunderbird is about 60% single women, 20% single men, and about 20% couples. More than half of these single women are trying to survive on approximately $12,100 a year to $26,000 a year, or between $1,000 a month and $2,100 a month from their social security. And there is this chart that will show you that based on the income level in Ventura County, these people are classified as acutely to extremely low-income families. Their monthly income has to cover all of their living expenses, including but not limited to their monthly mortgage, if they have one, food, clothing, the medical, utilities, auto expenses, and of course, the space rent. For me personally, I still work, and yet I already struggle to make ends meet financially. When I do retire, I do fear I will be faced with the very real possibility of losing my home and becoming homeless due to the decline in my income versus the expenses that I have. And I live on a very tight budget. I am sure many other homeowners here probably face that same fear. The CPI in the past 30 years never reached this high of a percentage except for one year. In 1997, I believe, it hit 9% or 7%. Now this year, in 2022, it is an anomaly at 8.5. You can see from this other chart that I have that the rent increases have only been between 1% and 3% each year, based on 100% of the CPI. And this is from 2012 to 2022. And now our rent is going up by 8.5%, which is 100% of CPI. The increase is going to impact all mobile park homeowners harshly. Capping the CPI, say, at 5% will not impact the property owners any differently than it has in the past 30 years, as CPI has reached, has never even reached 5% except for.
Thank you. Thank you so much, ma'am. Next up, we have Karen Haskin, followed by Jerry Barnett. Carrie, if you could come down. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mayor Protam, City Council members and staff. My name is Karen Haskin, and I live in the Thunderbird Oaks Mobile Home Park. I am here to ask you to begin the legal process to add a 5% cap on the 100% CPI figure, which is used to calculate annual rent increases under the city's RSO. I feel there is nothing wrong with the CPI. It just needs the addition of a reasonable cap. The two highest percentages, and I did take this from last year's June 22 video, and I thought I have this correct. I'm now not sure, but the two. But the two highest percentages that I have listed ever used for rent increases under the CPI were 5.5% in 1991 and 3.8% in 2018. Which, with such a long and consistently low CPI rent increase history, I understand that the council might feel this was a good model, and it was, up until this year. Annual increases through 2021 had been reasonable for homeowners and provided park owners a fair rate of return. I do not feel, from my reading, that a cap, I feel a cap does not change this process. However, in 2022, because of an extremely high inflation rate, the CPI figure used to calculate our rent, as we've all just heard and discussed, increased to 8.5%. Prior history shows that 8.5% is an anomaly, excuse me, and clearly documents why a cap on the CPI is needed. A cap guarantees the ongoing integrity of the RSO by preventing inordinately high rent increases caused by inflation. The majority of other cities with RSOs in California have had the foresight to place a cap on the CPI. 5% seems to be the average used. This demonstrates that park owners and homeowners can agree to include a cap in their RSO. I thank you for taking attention and consideration for all the things you've mentioned here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Jerry Barnett, followed by George Rosenthal.
My name is Jerry Barnett, I'm from Camarillo. As I mentioned two weeks ago, I'm here because what happens in Thousand Oaks affects me in Camarillo. This is a regional CPI that you're using. It's not the CPI that the federal government recommends, but I'll mention that later. If you can display what I have there. The news release for March of 2022 came out on April 12, and the percent change in the all items category indexes was 8.5. And what if, the Bureau of Labor Statistics does mention that, but also mentions that food prices were at 8.6, and fuel prices, transportation was high. The CPIU index for gasoline was 50%, and that put things up. So the Bureau of Labor Statistics put here that the index for all items less food and energy is 6.2%. It's very interesting to me that one of your parks has agreed to that being the increase, rounded down to six. And I believe it needs to be understood that the CPI is multiple indexes, it's not one. The all items is a category of weighted importances, and I don't believe that your ordinance specifies which index is to be used.
Thank you, sir.
The categories, a little more, the categories, there's eight primary categories. And this is a chart showing that housing is down to 5.6, transportation's up at 22.8. The implementation in Thousand Oaks is that rent should be up here and not down where the CPIU puts it. The Bureau of Labor Statistics recommends that you use the U.S. City Average CPI. It also mentions that it's not appropriate to use the seasonally adjusted CPI. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Mr. Rosenthal, followed by Lynn Young.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. I'm George Rosenthal from Ventura Estates. 2023 social security COLA increases are not enough for retirees. Retiree expenses are increasing faster than ever in 40 years. As measured by the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index, prices for essentials like food, gas, utilities are all up substantially over last year. Food prices have risen 10.9, gas has jumped 50%, utility prices are up 19%. A Thousand Oaks City Council has made a great mistake, ignoring the subject of CPI increases to seniors and ignoring the duty to look out for residents. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the CPI index increased to 8.5. But the CPI is an average of prices over time. The CPI is based upon food, clothing, shelter, fuels, transportation, doctors, drugs, et cetera. 8.5% was reached averaging all 50 categories of increase. Included in the average was energy at 50, food at 20, used cars at 34. The Department of Labor takes into account all 50 categories put forward as a number for an average, but the numbers for housing and rent are separate as an alone value at 3.4%. The Bureau of Labor does not state that rent is 8.5. That's an all-encompassing average, which includes food, clothing, shelter, fuels, transportation, doctors, et cetera. Average rent has increased due to CPI over the last 10 years around 3%. City has allowed landowners to increase rent 15% each time a house was sold for seven years, and 10% thereafter. And now an 8.5% increase on top of that is resulting in a CPI foreign excess. The city does not give homeowners a means to apply for rent adjustment, cap reduction, or decrease through the Planning Commission. The city ignored the homeowner's request in June of '21 to cap the CPI. The city's inaction is causing rent destabilization. The city's inaction will cause more homelessness. The city's failure to initiate a cap looks bad, very bad. Seniors on a fixed income cannot work and are not going to survive. There has to be a cap on the CPI for seniors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Lynn Young, followed by Kapaka Senko.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Council Members and the staff. My name is Lynn Young, I'm a very new mobile homeowner of two months at Ventura Villa. This park is the 55th in order, I don't want to be there, I don't want to be here tonight either. This all happened too soon. I was told the rent increased probably 3%, but then this whole thing just happened. I learned about the 8.5% increase as well, welcome newcomers, instead of a cake, I got an 8.5% increase. Anyways, I heard about, gentleman said about this negotiation in 1996. That negotiation is confidential between the park owners and the residents, but that probably only between the rental and the Thunderbird. What about the six other residents? My suggestion, before I run out of time, is that because the landowners has not provided application at this time, all of you should step in to suggest, maybe we can renegotiate, because that no cap was taken away by the, because they agreed, not by the ordinance, not by your authority, but by agreement. But that agreement expired in 2021, therefore, right now, we have a new, we have a time to do the new negotiation. I think that's the win-win situation. From there, we can take it up to say, who sues, who sue, everybody will lose, let's agree. Okay, so now, that being said, the, all of you, city members or council members, I'm also learning about this political term. When you took office, there's a mission statement, it says, "You would provide extraordinary service to the citizens we serve in our purpose." Okay, here's your term, we all elected you at that time, now we need you to vote for us. And also, I print out from City of Thousand Oaks, it also says, "You would provide excellent community service in a fair, efficient, and responsive manner, and to promote public confidence and trust." You are facing 1,000 mobile home families versus eight mobile home landowners. We are not talking about emotion, we're talking about legally, you have a duty to speak for your fellow residents. Does eight mobile homeowners, none of them live here, none of them vote for you? Now, let's talk about the ordinance. The ordinance, Chapter 25, it says, you know, the hardship, whatever, blah blah, low income, everything, 60%, you all heard that. Now, the point is this, in 2020, in 2020, you took away the cap, now put it back, because you have the authority to do so. And also, the 8.5% increase does cost the excessive hardship on the renters, based on the Chapter 25. And also, the 5% cap does not deprive the ownerships just a reasonable rate of return. So when you think of voting, I know it's hard, just think about your oath and what your job you need to do. Now, this is the time you say, when I'm elected, I will, blah blah blah, thank you.
You all were doing so well.
I wonder if she'd like to be a campaign manager for any
If we could just, you know, refrain from the clapping and all that, we can have our kind attention to everybody. Very good, next up, we have Kapaka Senko.
Mayor, City Council Members, Staff, my name is Kapaka Senko. I live in Thunderbird Oaks, I'm addressing Agenda Item 10A. Tom Sawyer would be proud of the city staff's report. It whitewashes the sordid history of rent stabilization management in Thousand Oaks. It hides the city's failure to keep protection promises made in the rent stabilization ordinance. It hides the city's double dealing 11 years ago, where in exchange for landowners' promises not to ask for rent increases
Back up from the mic just a little bit.
And not to sue the city for 10 years, the city gave away our CPI cap. It hides how the city caved to landowners, better named the wolves of Thousand Oaks. When the Rent Adjustment Commission and city approved a $62 rent increase over two years, those greedy wolves said, no, we want more. They filed two lawsuits threatening to blow the city's house down. To appease them, it was the city, not homeowners, who initiated the rent stabilization ordinance. The ordinance was pitched as a big program for seniors. In truth, as administered, it gifted landowners an outrageous return of 70% on the backs of seniors, and for what? The wolves live elsewhere. They float our millions of rent dollars down the river on Huck Finn's raft, right into some other city's coffers. Foolishly, we're left with a rent destabilization system, contributing to poverty, homelessness, and more loss to small business. We asked for a cap a year ago, still you sit on your dais. Clean up this mess. Task your city attorney to find a legal means to cap the CPI to protect us. Balance interests to assure both fair returns and reasonable rents. Some council member said, oh, but homeowners will get a raise. So what? You don't have to invite the big bad wolf to dine on grandma's carcass. 10 years ago, your second attorney said, we are the city, we can do whatever we want. If so, Mayor Engel, do the heavy lifting. Cap the CPI at 5% immediately with a stroke of your pen. You owe it to us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Once again, once again. And our next speaker is Mr. George Senko, followed by Pav Hostmeyer.
Mr. Mayor, Council Members, Staff, and fellow homeowners. My name is George Senko, I live in Thunderbird Oaks. I'm addressing Agenda Item 10A. I have two engineering degrees and an MBA. I helped put the Surveyor on the Moon and designed the first-ever in the world digital flight control system for the F-100 interceptor. As to the RSO system, it's unstable. Supposedly, it was designed to deliver results for mobile homeowners and landowners. MHOs were concerned last year about coming problems. We were surprised the city only rubber-stamped the 2011 RSO in 2021 with only minor changes. We expected a complete review. MHOs asked for a cap at that time. Staffs passed over these concerns, saying the CPI was not too high in the past, therefore, it wouldn't be in the future. When the cap discussion was supposedly tabled until fall, it was never addressed. You chose not to look at the instruments. Now the system is in a tailspin. Why? Our view is that RSO you inherited was duplicitously negotiated by the city in 2021. You initially approved a 72% NOI, 8% over the LOs, 64%. We would have been happy with that. The LOs were not happy and sued the city. It was because the city did not stand up to the LOs that we ended up in negotiations. The city got what it wanted, that's why the RAC never had any meetings. No litigation and no rent increase requests for 10 years. That was the moratorium. It kept the problem 10 years down the road, which yielded the outrageous situation today. Our estimate is that the city, the deal the city negotiated caused the city to let 2.7 million over 10 years flow out of the area. That money could have been gone to community businesses. Mobile homes are an asset to the city. We, MHOs, have invested over 200 million. The city crowns about getting its 27 million grant to house 77 people, which works out to costs of 350,000 per person. Do you expect your successors to find 455 million to houses after you put us out on the streets? The plane is going down. Sully Solenberger couldn't wait when his engines went out. Take the controls, enact the immediate 5% cap, and look at fixing the dysfunction of the RSO. Fasten your seat belts.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Patricia Hostmeyer, followed by Jimmy Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council Members, for allowing me to speak this evening. I spoke when I was here last time. My name is Pat Hostmeyer, I live at the Ranch Mobile Home Park. And I lived in Thunderbird Oaks, for, I was the manager there, actually, for 13 years. And when I abruptly lost my job, I couldn't afford to, I lost my home to live in. So it was, you know, the road, I had to hit the road. The only place I could afford to go was to the ranch, because, as you know, that is a low-income park. That's the way it was designed, and that's the way I believe it still will be, it should be, anyway. Now, my only income is social security, but at the age of 83, I'm working a part-time job just to make ends meet. My medical, my prescriptions every month are $500. I mean, that's just one of the things. So I'm not getting rich, but I'm keeping my head above water. So, I'm not getting rich, but I've, I'm keeping my head above water, living very frugally. I don't understand what happened to the meaning "low income." When the park was built, it was built because the city asked to have it built as a low-income park. It's not low-income anymore, and we're all seniors there. I think all the people here are seniors in their parks. The seniors are taking an awful hit here, and it's not only depressing, it's irritating, and it's very, it's very concerning to, to all of us. I don't know where to go next, because the ranch is the lowest one that I know, rent-wise, and I just hope that you guys will reconsider. Give us that five percent cap. My goodness, where did it go? How did it go? Please reconsider and give us another shot at this. I, I appreciate your time, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jimmy Washington, followed by Bruce Udelf.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members and staff. I'm Jimmy Washington, and I'm, am a, I live in Vinto Park. I'm, am a retired Army veteran and a former social worker with the Veterans Administration. As a rent adjustment counseling therapist with the VA, I assisted former military combat veterans and their families suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder. I am here today to share with you my belief as to the emotional impact an eight point five percent rent increase will have on mobile home park tenants. My primary focus today is on the subject of fear. Fear has both physical and mental characteristics. A person who is in a state of fear carries with them thoughts of worry, impending doom, anticipates a catastrophe, feels threatened by people or events, has a desire to escape, fears losing control, being rejected or abandoned. The person can eventually fall into a state of depression and feelings of hopelessness. If not already occurring, fear will have an immediate impact when rent comes due. People living paycheck to paycheck will fear their inability to meet the monetary demands a rent increase will have on their lives. Anxiety will set in as they try to manage what little income they have. Of major concern will be how to stretch food allowance, transportation costs, paying for utilities, and for medical or unexpected events. In addition to fear and anxiety, depression and isolation may happen to some who live alone or who lack social support system. They fear most of all the possibility of becoming homeless. The rent increase, if approved, will come just before the holiday season. But it doesn't have to happen this way. Park owners and people in general have choices. So, let me explain, and I can explain by using this old Native American parable. It summarizes as follows. Imagine there are these two wolves who lives inside each of us, who are always seeking dominance. One is evil. He, she is anger, envy, sorrow, regret, arrogance, self-pity, guilt, resentment, inferiority, lies, false pride, superiority, and ego. The other wolf embodies positive emotions. He, she is joy, peace, love, serenity, humility, kindness, benevolence, empathy, generosity, truth, compassion, and faith. And the question is, which one wins? The answer is, whichever one you decide to feed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bruce Udelf, and then followed by Miller Vargas.
City council members and staff, thank you for listening to us this evening, I really appreciate it. My talk this evening is a little bit different. I spent more than forty years in the business of helping seniors around retirement communities. I was an executive director. The communities I worked for were all not-for-profit, which meant that we had a safety net for our people. We provided housing, meals, activities, housekeeping, and so on. If they ran out of money, we took care of them, didn't matter. We're faced with something very different here, and let me just back up. We hired a PhD, this was back about thirty-five years ago, and he came in to give us characteristics of our residents, so we could better serve them. And one of the keys was, these were depression people. They were scared. The banks had, had left them high and dry, the government left them high and dry, and they had suffered. They were nervous about money. We, as their children, took on some of that. We are nervous, we're scared, but we are better prepared, except when we get to be eighty or ninety, and we are beset with infirmities, and have to bear the cost of dental implants, hearing aids, wheelchair lifts, and so on. It's a scary thing. So, here along comes an eight point five percent increase, and I can tell you from the people I talked to, they're scared, they are nervous, they are angry, they are upset, they are traumatized. And I'm hoping somewhere we can find a middle ground here to help them out. Their feelings are real, not necessarily logical. Many of us are going to be getting probably a nine or ten percent social security increase. It's going to cover a lot of this, but not everything. Somewhere here, I hope there's some middle ground. I was pleased to hear this evening about the safety net that this city has, between many mansions, the food banks, Habitat, and so on and so forth. I don't think anybody needs to be sent away or lose their home here. There is a safety net in this community. So, I think maybe, you know, people are getting a little too emotional. But again, I hope you folks will come forward, help us to find a middle ground, something that we can, that's good for the owners, because they deserve it, and it's good for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Miller Vargas, followed by Jeff Schwartz.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Miller Vargas. City members, what a pleasure to see you guys again. And to me, I just want to let you know, I moved in into the Vinto States two years ago. They increased me my rent at ten percent when I bought the home. They continue increasing it two percent every year, but the situation is that I don't only pay for the rent, I have to pay for the sewer, all the utilities, because they read everything, they don't, they don't, we don't have any accounts with Zonk California, Edison, or anything. They handle all that situation. And then by the time, with my retirement income, by the time I pay for my, for my car insurance, my home insurance, and my, um, well, and everything else that I have to pay for, like my, um, my home insurance, my, all my life insurance, I'm, right now, with the eight percent, unfortunately, with that income, the, um, the one hundred dollars have become the one thousand dollars. And I really don't know how, how do these people operate this way, by charging you with all the electricity, and the gas, and the water, and everything else? Because you cannot have any accounts, and you, is, is that the right amount of utilities that you're using? Is there an increase? And now, with the eight point five percent increase on the rent, by the time I pay for everything else, my, my balance becomes a lot smaller, which again, like I told, mentioned it to you guys last time, it all becomes about the, um, your food and your drinks and everything else, are, what is, what kind of food are you going to be having? Are you going to have enough food for the one month? And it affects, it all end up, and this area end up affecting, more likely, it's going to end up affecting all the seniors, because you have to be a senior, you have to be retired, you have to only make X amount of money to become owner of these homes. It's a very interesting situation in the Vinto State Park. And I also, I'm also willing, because being in the hotel industry for over forty years, I'm willing to, if you guys require any volunteer, I'd be more than happy to become the volunteer, after the, after this coming Monday, because I have the, I'll be volunteering for the Boys and Girl, for the Boys and Girls Club, golf course, for the Moore Park and Simi Valley.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vargas. Time is up, I appreciate it. Thank you.
It will be an honor. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Jeff Schwartz.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and city staff. I'm Jeff Schwartz from Thousand Oaks. These are tough problems, I know. The issue is not, do we need to do something about the problem? The issue is, what are the best solutions to this problem? Rent control is a policy where government caps the rental price of units. This has political appeal, because it seems like an easy fix, but few people know about the unintended negative consequences of government rent control laws. Rent control units have abnormally locally, low vacancy rates, because tenants know they're receiving a bargain, and they will, don't move. This prevents turnover that normally occurs in healthy real estate markets. Newcomers or existing tenants not lucky enough to live in a rent-controlled unit have to compete for the limited remaining stock of market-rate housing. This raises the rents for all of us who are not living in a rent-controlled unit. Rent control may keep housing affordable for some, but it makes it less affordable for everyone else. There are numerous other negative unintended consequences of rent control. Rent control misallocates resources. It leads to under-maintenance of properties. It raises government compliance costs. It requires a bureaucracy to administer and enforce the rent control laws, and it stifles new construction. Another problem with rent control is that it violates private property rights. Our country was built on the principle of strong private property rights. Having a system of strong predictable property rights stimulates confidence among investors and promotes economic growth. Rent control laws interfere with this. Now, this does not mean that we should stop being compassionate to those in need. We should show compassion. We should want to help, but we need to start looking for alternative ways to treat our elderly and poor in a humane way that does not interfere to such an extent with our private property rights and our economy. The answer to this lies in free voluntary action of individuals in our community, such as family members, friends, neighbors, churches, synagogues, or voluntary nonprofit organizations. We already have many voluntary organizations that are successfully improving our community. Examples include the Salvation Army, Rotary Club, Kiwanis Club, Lions Club, and Chamber of Commerce. We should take the lead from these voluntary organizations and push even harder to use voluntary means to help the poor and the elderly in our community. I'm Jeff Schwartz from Thousand Oaks, thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is our last public speaker, I believe. We did have a couple of written comments that asked for a ordinance to control the rent at five percent. With that, we do have some, an opportunity for response from our staff and questions from council.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to make clear for the record that when we had the mediation in 2010 to 2011, all park owners, all resident groups from each park in the city participated in the mediation, participate in these days of mediation, except for the residents of Ranch Mobile Home Park. So, it wasn't a few of them, it was all of them, except for Ranch Mobile Home Park. That's first. Second, the parties in this mediation, both owners and the resident groups, they are the parties. They negotiated back and forth and agreed to the formula that is what is in our ordinance. These items include things such as, and these were bargained for, the ability to bring a just and reasonable rate of return application. That was something that was put on pause for ten years. The ability to subdivide the property, that was put on pause. Also, the formula, how, how, what percentage of the CPI, and again, in this case, it was negotiated from them. That would be seventy-five percent of CPI from 2011 to 2017, and from 2017 to the current, it would be a hundred percent of CPI. Again, that is negotiated. The cap, there was a cap before at seven percent, that was negotiated. There is no cap in the ordinance, because that was what was negotiated between the groups, the owners and the residents. And it's imperative that everyone understands that this ordinance is reflective of that agreement. It is not something that the city made up, it is reflective of that negotiated time period over those days in the mediation in the city. It is also imperative to understand that we cannot require, we cannot force, require park owners or resident groups to participate in any type of future discussions, to renegotiate, to discuss this. We cannot compel them to do that. We can only ask, and if, just like before, if we do not have one hundred percent participation with both owners and resident groups from all the parks, there is a significantly high, very high risk that we would have a challenge to whatever comes from that discussion. And with a challenge, there is always going to be a risk that the rent stabilization ordinance itself could be held invalidated, could be found to be voided. And that puts us into a situation where we don't have any rent control, we don't have any controls whatsoever on these parks. So, those are important things we need to clarify, is the mediation was what resulted in the agreement, which was what resulted in the ordinance that we have before us, and there are grave risks when we have an attempt to make changes without participation from all parties, all groups, all owners, for any future type of discussion.
In your comments, Mr. Parker, we do have a comment from city attorney, don't?
I'll wait for, you can go first.
Patrick covered it, go ahead.
I just wanted to say a few things. I think one of the previous speakers talked about compassion, and that the city council needs to show compassion for what's happening. And, and I'm here to tell you that, you know, when, when my office, the city attorney's office, looks at this issue, we always address it from a state of compassion for the residents. And it might not seem that way, but we always try to do our level best to look at it from, from another point of view. I have family that's struggling financially. Everyone is struggling financially right now. We get that. It, it's not an easy, it's not an easy issue. Rent control, especially when it comes to mobile home parks, is extremely complex. The state basically controls ninety-five percent of what happens in a mobile home park. Cities have very limited ability to control what happens in mobile home parks, very limited. The City of Thousand Oaks actually is one of a very few number of cities in the entire state of California that does impose rent control for mobile home parks. And I think back to, or I, I think right now, to my daughter who lives in an apartment that is subject to state rent control, and that state rent control is five percent plus CPI, or ten percent, whichever is lower. And if you have family that lives in an apartment or a house that is built after 1995, cities are legally prohibited from imposing any type of rent control. So, these are the kind of complexities that we deal with. And I also have to look at, when we, when I look at the, the ordinance, I also have to look at it from a legal perspective of everyone's rights. I also have to take into consideration that property owners have rights. They have rights to profit off of their business, they run them as a business. And I have to try to do my level best to protect the city tax dollar from not being spent on a, on a lawsuit that I have concerns that we might lose. And those are... And those are some of the challenges that my office is faced with. And it's not just my office, it's the city council, because ultimately, it's up to the city council what they're going to do. Whether they direct staff to ask the owners and the residents to meet and try to renegotiate the ordinance, whether they direct staff to just unilaterally change it, the formula, or whether they direct staff to just leave it alone. Ultimately, it's up to the city council. But I, but I want you all, I hope you all know that we look at this from a very rounded perspective, and we hear you, we hear the pain, we hear the concerns that you all are experiencing. Again, our own families are experiencing the same levels of struggle that a lot of you in this room are too. And I, when I, when I look at this rent stabilization ordinance, I'll tell you, I was here when we litigated the last time, and my number one concern at that time was that if the city lost, if we had lost that lawsuit, rent control would have been gone. It would have disappeared. Not a single one of you would be protected by rent control. Not a single one of you would be protected from eviction. Not a single one of you would have had any protections at all had we lost that lawsuit. And so that's one of the perspectives that I look at. Every time we tweak it, am I exposing the city, am I exposing you all to the risk of losing rent control in its entirety? Those are some of the factors that we have to weigh when we're looking at this. You're right, 8.5% is, is just ridiculous right now. It is ridiculous. But if I make a change, if council directs us to make a change, is the risk too high? That's a question the city council has to ask themselves. And I hope that you will, whatever they decide, because I don't know what they're going to decide, but whatever they decide, I hope you will understand that they are looking at this from a state of compassion, but they're also looking at it from a state of their fiduciary obligations to the taxpayer, the risks involved with making changes to the ordinance, and they're also looking at it from a perspective of, how best can I protect you right now? It is a very complex area of the law, incredibly complex, and, and the city has very limited options in this case. So I just wanted to just say a few words, so I hope you understand this is coming sincerely from my heart, and I hope you understand that this is, it's not just a business decision, it's not just a, we ignore it because we don't want to deal with it. That's not it at all. It truly is a balancing and an analysis that we all have to do when we're looking at these types of very complex and very emotional issues. So thank you.
Mr. Parker, did you have a comment?
No, not at this time.
Thank you, then. We'll go to council questions. We have Mr. Adam with his hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Tracy's right, that lawsuit cost the taxpayers a million bucks and took us two years to defend, and thank God we won because it kept the rent stabilization ordinance So this inflation is affecting all of us, not just you folks, the entire city, the entire Kennedy, entire country for that matter. But here in the city of Thousand Oaks, you folks are the only ones that have any kind of rent control. Everybody else is subject, as Tracy said, to some state regulations, but I don't know if you saw the article in The Star today, there's a, there's an apartment complex inventor called Cypress Meadows, and because it's a long, it's kind of complicated, but because the owners are allowing some state subsidies to go in, they are threatening to raise the rent from anywhere from 13% to 17% to some of these folks because they don't have rent control that you do. Be that as it may, I wanted to ask staff about this business of negotiation. It's not like we haven't looked into this for you, believe me. One of the first things staff did was contact park owners, did we not?
We did, I believe that was Mr. Rogers.
And how many park owners did we contact?
I would have Mr. Rogers speak on that. Do you have the information?
Oh, okay, Gary, Gary will come down. So we kind of started an impromptu negotiation by contacting, how many park owners did we contact, Gary?
Yeah, Councilmember Adam, we did reach out to every park owner. The only question that was posed to them was, would they reconsider or consider an adjustment to the rates increases that were scheduled? So the question was not asked, would you, you know, enter into mediation, or would you pursue that avenue?
Okay, and what was their answer?
Their answer was, we will follow through with the rates that we have announced and that, that were originally permitted by the ordinance with the exception of Valsito, which came in at 6%.
They came in at 6%. And so there was six park owners, I think it was?
There are eight park owners. One of the parks actually currently has no residents, so there were seven parks that were contacted.
So all of them said eight and a half, we're sticking with the eight and a half, we're firm on that, and one said, well, we're just going to go with six. Okay, and so Patrick made, I think, a good point. If we're going to have a negotiation, we need two sides there. So I guess my question to you is more of an opinion. If the park owners are saying, we're firm on eight and a half, what do you see the prospects of us turning around now, asking them to come to the negotiating table to try to negotiate a cap or a percentage or whatever it may be?
Yeah, so it's not fair for me to speak for them. What I would say is the impression I got that they were very firm at the 8.5 and that they were going to, you know, pursue that avenue. And they did not foresee a possibility of, of interrated discussion or having a reduction in that amount.
All right, Gary, thank you. It's kind of a dose of realism, but I wanted to hear, you know, hear, you to hear what the, how the park owners responded. We did reach out in hopes that they would say, well, you know what, maybe we can work with you, but didn't happen. And then I think Patrick said, to have a true negotiation, we need everybody there, do we not?
That is correct.
And if I may add on to that, I just want to make sure from a point of clarity, you know, the council heard concerns from residents, and so staff proactively had conversations with those park owners. Those conversations were confined because we did not have council direction, right? So there's no way you can have a discussion with, with these owners about something that we don't have council direction behind, so first and foremost. Secondly, in, in that discussion, we shared the concerns we're hearing from residents. Many of them were aware of, of those concerns to a certain extent, and, and asked if there was any consideration or they had any consideration for any additional flexibility. And we had to be very careful in how you frame those conversations because these folks are operating within an adopted ordinance by the city council. And so they're operating within the four walls of the law. And so those conversations were very focused and, but done at the behest of, of all of you in trying to, to see if there was any even monochrome of brokerage there.
Well, I just bring it up because this concept of negotiation has come up, and I thought it was relevant to, you know, to how the park owners answered. Thank you, Bob.
Next, thank you. Next up was Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. While I was going through my studies, working a 40-hour-a-week job, and by the time you pay off all the bills, you're left with $20, and the insurance bill had not yet arrived. So I understand the concern that this increase in your rent will cause a choice of, do I pay this bill, that bill, eat or not eat? And I'm glad we have support services as a safety net here in this community. That's one of the greatest joys of being in this community is that we care about each other and try to do the best we can to help those that are in need. The challenge that I have is that I look at, this current presidential administration put $5 trillion of stimulus into the economy. That means too many dollars chasing around, chasing too few goods, creating this inflation. We've reduced the amount of oil and natural gas we've produced and are not exporting as we did in previous administrations, where oil was at $50 a barrel, now it's over $100 a barrel. Thus, you're feeling it at the pump, and money is leaving this country, going to countries that would like to wipe us off the face of the earth. That's some of the indications of where this, this inflation is coming from, and you're feeling it on a local level because of decisions in Washington.
Kevin.
Kevin, can you?
I don't mean to interrupt. Can you speak?
No, no, no. I can't.
I'm moving forward with the decision. I'm trying to lay it down.
Just speak a little more.
A little more? Oh, okay.
I'm not picking you up.
I'm sorry, folks, did you hear that or no? Okay, I'm sorry, I'll start over again. Thank you, Bob. As I was saying that, when I was in school, my challenge was that I'd work 40 hours a week and wind up with $20 at the end of the month, and the insurance bill had not yet arrived, and it created a lot of uncertainty. And you're going through that right now with this eight and a half percent increase, trying to decide, am I going to pay certain bills or not eat? So I understand what you're going through. I've been there, done that, and it's a difficult situation to be in. What I wanted to share with you is that the inflation we're experiencing is the result of decisions out of Washington, where we have $5 trillion that's been put into this economy to stimulate it, and it's too much money chasing too few goods. Thus, the inflation has increased. We also have seen oil prices increase because we are no longer net exporting oil, keeping oil down to $50 a barrel. It's now over $100 a barrel, so gasoline prices have increased to the point where we are sending money over to countries that want the United States wiped off the face of the earth, and our dollars are leaving the country. So what is happening in Washington with their policies affecting us here on the local level, and you're experiencing the high inflation? My question to Mr. Meher, here, question for you. Mr., if I can write down his name, Mr. Barnett brought up an excellent point. When I went through my economics courses, they speak of core CPI and CPI. Core CPI meaning it eliminates energy costs as well as food, because those are up and down in pricing, and that's not a very good indicator when you include that with the CPI number. What was negotiated way back when, 10 years ago? Was the inflation number that was used, the CPI, was that core CPI excluding energy and food, or did that include energy and food in that CPI calculation?
I would have to check with maybe the finance director on, on the CPI issue. I will say, though, that, that there is a definition of the index in the ordinance, and that was what was negotiated as part of the negotiation between them, during the mediation, I should say.
I see. We have our finance manager, Jamie, stepping up, so Jamie, I'm listening.
Thank you, Councilmember McNamee. I was not part of the negotiations, but the city standard has been that we use the Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim urban area, all items CPI. That is what we have used every single year. That is our city standard, so that is all items, and that's what we use.
So you say all items, that includes energy and food, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Because that should be excluded, energy and food, because it is too variable, it's too volatile, and economics, experts exclude that and look at core CPI. So that would bring it down according to Mr. Barnett, and I'm going to go with his number of 6.2% as compared to 8.5. And again, Mr. Meher, here, could you please clarify that later on down the road for us regarding that, if it was core CPI that was negotiated or overall CPI? Because those numbers should not even be included because of the volatility of food and energy.
I understand what you're saying. I would say that, again, it goes to the definition that we have in the index, and as Ms. Boscarino said, we've used that same calculation, that same definition for at least as long as I've been here during the ordinance that we've had. So it's the same definition, the same use, same application. The difference was 75% of it versus 100% of it.
So what we're saying is that, yes, councilman, we are using CPI including energy and food, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Appreciate you clarifying that. And the last one is, Mr. Schwartz brings up an excellent point about how, yes, we've got rent control here, and nowhere else in the city do we have it. And rent control actually is disruptive in the economy because people don't want to come in and build more housing because of it. If they can't make a profit return on it, it will not happen. And this is one where it's, as our city attorney says, it's very challenging because on a compassion level, you're being placed in a very difficult situation. Speak to your U.S. senators, your congressmen, to talk about changing some of their energy policies as well as their economic policies in Washington. We're feeling the effect on the local level. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, I think we have Ms. Pilar De La Peña, followed by our esteemed Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. The, really, we only have seven parks left. The eighth park is closed in the sense that it has no residents, and it's not officially gone through the application, but, you know, let's just say we have seven active parks. And one of them is okay with a 6% increase, all the others want an 8%, an eight and a half percent increase. While the, I do appreciate staff reaching out to the various park owners in order to see if there was any wiggle room to lower the, the rate, they didn't ask the question with a full council approval. So that is why I would very much like to see if we could begin a negotiation with council approval and see where that goes. I mean, it could very well be that it will go nowhere, but at least, in the very least, we should give it a shot. I don't think that any of the residents here tonight are going to call their senators over energy issues and all of that because the clock is ticking. November 1st is coming up, it's just right around the corner, and nothing is going to happen at the federal level to bring you relief. So it would be my strong recommendation to at least try to negotiate, and that's really what all we can do at this time. We were successful a few years ago. It was a very messy process, I have to say, back in 2010, 2011. It wasn't quite the way it went, but nonetheless, it did bring temporary relief. And I wouldn't like to see the city renegotiating everything every 10 years. There has to be some sort of consistency. But again, you know, I don't have any additional or any questions right now rather than observation and just my own opinion and statement as to what I think we could do for the time being.
Mr. Jones had his next hand up.
Yeah, we, we have a definite problem here, and all of us here would like to solve it. The problem with the free enterprise system is that if you apply it to the essentials of life, food, clothing, and shelter, if you don't have competition from the many, many, the theory of free enterprise is everybody competes, and the only way you get business is you lower your price and increase your quality. Well, when you have an item that is in limited supply, such as housing, that won't work, okay? People don't have to make the prices lower or the quality better if they're the only game in town. We have people here tonight, Mr. Mayor, that we've heard are in fear. You know, philosophical debates on economics are interesting, but they don't solve anything. We need to say, where are we now? We have a lot of people that weren't here 10 years ago, and they don't, you know, know what happened. The city made a great investment of time and money and so forth to, to try to help, and had a lawsuit and spent a million dollars. So, you know, the city is the good guys here, but now the question is, it doesn't do us any good to talk about the past, we need to talk about right now. To my mind, I don't know of any more economic housing than mobile home parks. I think it's the last step, you know, before homelessness, and I think some people here tonight are really in fear, and we don't want that. So we want to do whatever we can do. I agree with Claudia that we should try some more negotiations. If that doesn't work, I would not be adverse to putting on a cap. You know, you say, well, you're, we might be at some risk. Well, we're in a better financial position as a city than a lot of these homeowners are relative to food. I don't think free enterprise should apply to food, clothing, and shelter. I think there needs to be some way of society, society to try to make, to let people stay above water, to, you know, so that they don't run out of these essentials. I would like to do whatever we can do, and as I say, I agree that we should try to negotiate some more because I'm, I'm afraid of what's going to happen after November 1st. I don't want to see, you know, we've got too many I don't want to see, you know, we've got too many people that are homeless now. We're doing our best, but I think it would be not only humane, but it'd be cheaper to keep people in mobile homes than on the street, is that going to be good? I'd rather the city spend a little money if we have to, to try to keep these people above water, and, you know, with the rip over there, that gentleman that spoke about the elements of fear and the different stages, I mean, that is so depressing to think about what many people may be going through right now. So I think we're the court of last resort here. And I, my, what I would favor would be one last, how long is it to November first? It's what, a month and a half?
Month.
I think we ought to, Mr. Mayor, we ought to try one more time at some kind of negotiation. And if that doesn't work, I think we ought to put on a cap. You know, I'm You might say it's very nice of me to be free with the city's money, but that's not my point. What is it going to cost if we all of a sudden have a few hundred people homeless and on the street, you know? I don't want to go on forever, but I think you have my point. We need to do something before November first.
I think Mr. Adam had a comment? Yes?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I mean, Ed, no one on this council disagrees that our mobile home parks are the bastion of affordable housing here in the city, and we need them desperately, and that a lot of people really depend on that situation. And I believe over the last ten years, you know, the city has worked hard to keep this situation stable. And yes, now all of a sudden, we got a situation that came up that wasn't here last year, the year before, the year before, the year before. I'll say this, if we embark on some kind of a unilateral change of the CPI rate that was agreed on as a council, I think we are opening ourselves up to some very dire consequences. I think that the owners will hit us with just and reasonable return requests immediately, and they'll litigate if we are arbitrarily to change it. Now, as far as the negotiation point, Claudia makes the point, and we could talk about this, you and I, Claudia makes the point that, well, we've already tried to negotiate with the owners, but it wasn't done under the auspices of the city council. It wasn't done by our direction.
They didn't say we were going to negotiate, they just asked if they were willing to lower the rate.
Exactly, exactly. And you seem to feel that if it has the city council's, how would you want to call them? The what? Blessing, auspice, whatever the word is, that maybe it'll get their attention. I've got to tell you, based on their replies so far, I'm not so sure, not so sure. You know, they have their case, too. They're facing higher water rents, they're facing, well, okay, you can nod your heads. Anyway, we won't even go there, we won't even go there. Okay, okay, I'm not going to defend the owners.
Please, no comments from the audience.
I'm not going to defend the owners one way or another. Point being that, I mean, although I'm not real certain about the kind of success we have, I would be amenable if the council wants to proceed with some sort of negotiation with the owners, as you suggest, under the direction of the council. And like you yourself said, may not get us anywhere, but I suppose it's worth a try.
Yes, it is definitely worth a try.
Is that where you're at?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. And I think you're saying the same thing, Ed, are you not?
Well, I'd like to make a motion, if I could.
Actually, there's still quite a bit of discussion to go.
I need some clarification, because if there's going to be direction given to staff, I need to know precisely what that direction is, so I do have to
And maybe I can take a stab at, just because we've heard a lot of different pieces, right? So we've heard discussion, we all recognize that we're operating under an existing legally
adopted ordinance today. So there's discussion about basically a retroactive, asking to go back as it relates to this year, right? So that's one bucket.
Back up again, what'd you just say?
Well, there seems to be discussion about this year's rate increase that's on the table for November. So this is what I'm seeking clarification from the entirety of the council on, in terms of what discussions you're seeking to have staff have with the owners. The next is regarding mediation for cracking open the ordinance and putting it on the table for mediated discussion, which, as both of our attorneys have said, would require unanimous participation from all the parks and the owners. Before we can say we are going to mediate, we would have to ensure that we have participation for mediation, meaning unanimous participation for mediation. That scenario is, that's the first step if we're going to go down that path. Following that would be some subsequent action in terms of budget authority to bring in an outside mediator to begin that process. So I just want to make sure, and I know this is where Tracy was going as well, that there's clarity in terms of what you're seeking for staff to do.
Yeah, and I do have some to follow along with what Drew was talking about. I just want to make sure I understand, again, I need confirmation that with respect to renegotiation of the rent stabilization ordinance, if the direction is for us to seek renegotiation by the parties or mediation, I just need confirmation from you all that it does require a hundred percent participation. Again, the significant risk of not having a hundred percent participation is really high, so I just need confirmation that if one park owner or one delegation of residents do not agree to participate, then we would not go forward with mediation.
It would have to be a hundred percent participation, or it wouldn't be valid.
Right, so I just want to make sure that everyone agrees.
So there's, I mean, there's a lot of roadblocks to this thing happening.
So that's just one thing, so everyone's in agreement, if we reach out, if we try to mediate and renegotiate the rent stabilization ordinance, if one park owner or one rent resident delegation does not agree to participate, then we will not go forward with that mediation.
Well, can I ask a question? Do we have to go through all that? Can't we just sit down with the owners and say, can't we work something out for this year, because this is an unusually high year?
Mr. Jones, I believe that's what we did. We did ask them, and there was a firm no.
Did they understand that that was an offer on behalf of the whole city council, the whole city?
It was not.
It was not part of the city council, because we did not discuss it, but they did go and ask, and got a firm no.
There's correspondence in the
If they understood it was an official request by the city acting in unison to do that, you know, why don't you be good guys this year? And I understand that doesn't work in free enterprise, but I think it's worth a try.
I'm just saying, we did try that, and we did, I don't know if everybody read it. No, no, I'm not saying we don't do it, I'm just saying we did reach out, and the answer was a firm no. We also had follow-up letters today in the supplemental packet where they also indicated a firm no.
A firm no, in today's packet.
In today's supplemental packet that came out at, what, three thirty or something?
The only difference with this
Okay, I need to get to Mr. McNamee, he's been had his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
After that, I do have more questions and clarification.
I want to ask two questions, Mr. Heher. I understand it correctly that if we open this up, we would have a good chance of facing a lawsuit that will be paid for by the taxpayers of Thousand Oaks in the tune of millions of dollars, is that an accurate statement?
There's certainly a risk, just like we had before when we had one party that did not participate, and we had the lawsuit based on their dissatisfaction with that ordinance based on the negotiation.
And of the list of those that are going to give eight and a half percent increases, one with six percent, what is the chances of any of those park owners participating in any mediation and having at least one drop out and say, we're not going to participate at all, when we already came back to them and said, would you like to lower that a little bit? And they all said, no, we don't, we're happy where it is? What are the chances here?
I won't try to speculate on chances, I will just say that as we've been articulating it tonight, we certainly need a hundred percent of both sides to get to the table if it's going to be successful, without any risk of something happening afterwards.
And again, this mediation's paid for by the taxpayers and the people of Thousand Oaks, and yet, are we at risk at all being involved in that mediation in any way, shape, or form, given that we're a city entity? Or should the mediation occur organically between the park owners and the residents?
So in this case, it would be different than was done last time. We would actually, as Drew mentioned, we would need budget authority to hire an outside mediator, and that's because any agreement that would be reached has to be, we have to be sure that we can actually do it. So the city needs to participate in the sense of ensuring that whatever the parties agree can legally be done.
And my last, third question there, is that was there not one year in which it was negative for the CPI in the history of the increases and decreases in rent?
I believe it was 2009 it was negative, I think.
So this could go up or down depending on where we are in the economy, so in 2009 it actually went negative, is that correct?
Correct, it's varied over the years, of course. The last ten years, I just could say it's between one and three point eight, except for this last year, of course, or this next year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Another comment by our city attorney?
Yeah, it's not comments, it's, again, a request for clarification or direction with respect to the aspects of the renegotiation. You know, we could certainly ask the park owners if they're willing to just limit the renegotiation to the annual rent adjustment, but then they go into this knowing that the only thing that will happen is the rents will be reduced. I suspect that the only way they would agree to it is if they, if we reopened the entire rent stabilization ordinance. So I'm assuming that the direction would be that the entire rent stabilization ordinance would be subject to renegotiation if a hundred percent of the park owners and the residents agree to that, is that correct?
That's not the way I understand it.
I don't, I'm asking for direction.
I think what we're trying to do here is assure the residents that we're going to try. We're going to try, and I'm not talking about hiring a mediator, I'm not talking about redoing the entire RSO. I'm talking, as Claudia said, and I'm willing to go along with it, under council direction, which is different than what happened before, under council direction, the owners will be approached, would they be willing, since the issue with you folks is the CPI, would they be willing in some shape or form going forward to redo that CPI calculation? Simple as that.
And the only topic of conversation would be the CPI? Or would it be
That's the way I see it, don't you?
As many of the folks mentioned a cap.
So move it back from CPI to
I need to clarify, so a lot of the folks are talking that they want a cap at five percent.
Yeah.
So that's what we would present to them, that we would, or we're going to
That would be part of it, but yeah.
No, no, are we going to ask for a, just a lowering of the eight and a half? I mean, help me
Well, that's part of the negotiation, would they agree to a cap, would they agree to a certain percentage going forward? I don't see retroactive, folks.
So what you're saying is that we would completely reopen, just zipper that one little portion of the agreement, or do you think that would result in the entire agreement being opened?
I don't think it would result in the retirement agreement being opened. I think it would be limited, again, under council direction.
I have not been recognized by the mayor.
Go right ahead.
We, my anticipation is that what you're suggesting would be unrealistic if we were just going to try to walk in and zipper one piece of it. I mean, I'm with, I don't have any problem going and asking, but
You used a good word there.
I don't think we'll be able to zipper it up just for that one item.
You used a good word there, it could be unrealistic, and I don't want to give people false hope, but as you have suggested, you feel like we should try.
I'm not, I'm hoping, I'm not, look, what is it going to do if we're not even trying? We have to give it, we have to give it a shot. I don't think we have another option, and that would be just for the CPI. The others can see that one park is at six percent, and they are at eight and a half, and why wouldn't they all come to the table and agree to lower the rates? So that, you know, that is really what I'm looking for. As I said, I appreciate that staff did ask, are you willing to lower? And they said, no, they're a firm no, but I would hope that there will be council direction to show just how serious we are about this. And maybe there will be a change of mind, I don't know. I don't know unless I ask.
So if I understand you correctly
Hold on one second.
Are you asking us to, are you asking staff to ask them to amend the ordinance with respect to the formula, or just this one year, reduce it, voluntarily agree to reduce it? What exactly are you asking staff to ask them?
It would be great if we could amend it permanently.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. You're having a three people conversation down there.
We can't have a motion here until we're done with discussion.
We still have some discussion, thank you, Mr. Jones, but
But you can discuss after a motion is made.
No.
What do you mean, no?
You don't have anything on the table, we're still talking about what's going to be the motion.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We have people who still have questions and comments.
But I'm saying, you can have a motion on the table and discuss then.
We can, but we don't, I won't recognize your motion right now, I need a question from Mr. McNamee, who's been waiting.
All right, I'm trying to get clarification here, and I am empathetic with their city attorney. Are we being, are going to ask these property owners, even though staff has already asked you to reduce from eight and a half percent on down, we're going to come back again and say, would you please reduce it down to something like six percent, like the one park? Is that what we're asking them to do? And then I'm also hearing discussion about opening it up to change the formula, is that what we are all talking about here right now?
And I think if there's going to be a motion, I would ask that those are two distinct things, and so
Would you speak a little louder, please?
If there's going to be a motion, those are two distinctly different things. And so the first is bringing park owners in in a formal setting and having a discussion with, saying, council's provided this direction, and making that formal ask as it relates to this year's rent increase, and if they would be willing to modify this year's rent increase. Secondarily is changes to the ordinance, that is a much more complicated and nuanced question, and so that will need a little discussion by Tracy.
Mr. Mayor, his number one was going to be my motion. That's the motion I'd like to make, and I'd like to have a second part to that motion, that if that negotiations, however you want to term it, fails, that we consider a five percent cap.
Then, like I say, I think we're clarifying what we're talking about up here, Mr. Jones? We have one more question for Ms. Nolan.
It's not necessarily a question, I just want to make clear, the way that Drew talked about it is precisely what I was thinking. For purposes of the rent adjustment that is scheduled for November, that is entirely consistent with what they are legally allowed to do. So, again, just as we asked them before, we can ask them again whether they would voluntarily agree to reduce it, but we cannot compel them to reduce the rent adjustment schedule for November, because that is entirely within their
I don't think we're talking retroactively here.
Okay, there was, I think you indicated, someone indicated that they wanted to be a retroactive, I just want to make sure we're not talking about that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the first point
Thank you, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
That the city manager made.
Which point was that, Mr. Jones?
The one that we have an informal negotiation to try to get a lower rate for this year before November first. We try once more, give it a good try.
There, and I would agree, there is one park that's currently at six, are we going to be asking them as well, and what happens if they decide not to participate?
Well, I wouldn't, you know, you don't go into something anticipating the worst, you go into something positively, seeing if you can work something out. Sometimes when you get everybody in the room, they can be amenable. I mean, I don't think they want to go through the cost of a lawsuit. I mean, people can sit down and work things out in a reasonable fashion. We have people here that may lose their homes.
I'm very sympathetic to them.
Yeah, well, I don't want to be just sympathetic, I mean, I'm sympathetic, too, I don't mean to belittle that, but I'd say we need to take a positive step. And I think the first step is to sit down and see if they'll listen to reason. Eight and a half percent is going to be too much for some people. I mean, what is it going to be the cost if a lot of people are out in the street?
Can you put Can, can you put, can you put that into a motion?
He did. It was a motion to direct staff, you said to informally negotiate, but I think it's more like, you just want us to, you want us to ask them. We can't, yes.
Yes.
You want us to ask, yes. So it's a motion to direct staff to ask each of the park owners to agree to lower the rate this year.
Yeah, to get it down to 5% hopefully. Would it help to try to get them all together, or is that possible? Do they all live in?
It has to be 100%, Ed.
Do they all live in different places, and probably that's not feasible?
I don't, I haven't spoken to any of them. I don't know where they are, but I know we do have contact information. And I'm not, I don't want to, don't want to say we need to have them all get in the same room, or whether we'll have somebody just call them or contact them. I, I think the, the direction, if I hear you say, is to have our staff contact the.
Owners.
The owners, and with the weight of, weight of the city council's behest behind it, to make the behest to lower the rate below the eight and a half percent.
To 5%.
Yeah, well, shoot for 5%.
Okay, so lower it to 5%.
And so.
And I, and I'd like to, when is our next council meeting?
Two weeks.
29th, is it?
Yeah, two weeks.
See, this is the 13th, 27th, I guess. And report back on the 27th.
Very good.
Okay. All right, I'm completely unclear on this motion.
Okay, then let's get our motion.
Okay. I'm hearing three things. You want to retroactively ask the owners to, to cut the inflation rate. You want to.
For this year.
Yeah, and you want to, and then you want to go forward and try to renegotiate the formula that we use for the CPI in the future.
No, I don't know.
No, you don't want to do that.
No, I don't, I've never said I wanted to do that.
Okay, all right. I got that wrong. And then, and lastly, I heard you say that if they don't comply, you want to just arbitrarily lower it.
Well, I'm saying that if, I want to report back on the 27th at our next council meeting. At that time, one of the options for the council would be to consider a 5% cap.
Yeah, so.
I don't think that's mystical or mysterious.
Your, but your motion at this moment, notwithstanding other things, will have, will have our motion read.
Let me read the motion into the record. Motion is to direct staff to ask the owners, park owners, to lower the rate, the rent rate for this year, hopefully to 5%, and report back on September 27th. That's the motion.
And because I'm, because I'm into the detail here, I just want to make, calibrate expect.
Your microphone's off.
To make sure this is, as Claudia was saying earlier, that this is an action of the city, the whole council, the city is behind this motion, and it's not just somebody going out and talking.
And that's it? No change of the formula going forward? No arbitrary drop in the CPI, but they just?
I, I, I think the boat is about to sink. We ought to save the boat, and then we can save the ordinance.
Okay, I just want to get it straight, Ed, if you don't mind.
Let's, let.
You're saying you want to go back and ask them to lower the rate for this year?
For this year.
Since we're, since we're asking the staff to do that, I think we have another question from Mr. Parker.
Yeah, so, just, and this is more a calibration of expectations, right? These discussions, these discussions occur. They are likely to occur individualized on a park-by-park basis, and the reason is there are very different circumstances at each individual park. Some have done capital improvements, some have not, some have done common area improvements, and so on. So we'll have this discussion individualized. There is a scenario that some parks may make a decision perhaps to, to do something, and others may not. And so I just, there is a situation in which when we report back, that it could not be a unanimous, a unanimous picture. But I just, you know, want to, I don't want there to be surprises about that if that's, if that's a situation that comes, comes back.
You have discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Very good, go ahead.
Thank you. The, this is simply a good faith effort, but I was wondering, since it's not on the agenda, would it help if, say, forming, forming an ad hoc committee is not on the agenda, but would it help staff if one or two council members, not me, would, would somehow help present this? I mean, I'm just wondering whether, whether that would be helpful. If not, that's fine. I'm just wondering if that would carry more weight.
Just for me, it might be premature. We have, the motion is to go two, two weeks forward and find out.
All right.
Is there, if there's, you know, in a more formal setting, if there's, if there's more interest on the part of the owners.
And I, and I will tell you, and Tracy will probably back this up, that even this conversation is not, is not without risk, because we are asking, we are asking with a more affirmative policy position from the city council for something that is outside the bounds of our existing ordinance.
We're asking them not to exercise their rights.
And so I just, I want to be clear about that. So we will have these discussions with attorney, with attorneys present and key staff present. So I think it's actually more protective to have it in that environment.
And I, I think it's important for the people in the audience to understand that it may end right there. If we don't get 100% participation, that's going to be a problem. There is, there could be relect, well.
No, no speaking from the audience, please.
Please, you had your say. It's now, it's our turn to talk.
Not at this moment.
Anyway, but, anyway.
The, there is a motion on the floor. My, my only comment on the motion, and basically what we're doing is we're moving two weeks out, looking and going to the owners, and reaffirming or having them reconsider their hard-line stance on eight and a half percent. That's what we want them to do. We need to find out what they're, if they are going to continue to be strong at that, that level, that's going to hurt so many of our, of our citizens.
Wait a minute.
With, with, I'm speaking now, please. I, I want to make sure that everybody knows that this is not without risk to you. When I, I was a paramedic, and we have one of our council members whose husband is a The first thing we're taught is to do no harm. First, do no harm. So this is not without risk to go to these owners, who may then decide that, you know what? I can see where the handwriting's on the wall here, maybe we need to take other actions. Ms. Bildelapena mentioned that we used to have eight mobile home parks, we now have seven. One is being closed. That is an action that the park owners have every right, by state law, without, exclusive of what we might like in Thousand Oaks. They have that ability, under state law, to close parks, or to make them into condo wise parks. That's something that we have no control over. What we do have control over right now is that we have a CPI cap. This year's been, been a bad, bad year. Prior years have not been a bad year. I have no problem going and asking them, but I want you all to know, that is not without risk.
I'd like to call for a vote on the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Just one comment, if I may. Bob, you used the word continue, when you were speaking about if they want to continue down this path, the CPI. We're talking about this year only.
That's right. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if I missed.
All right, no, I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
Just want to be clear. And, and I agree with you, there is risk to this. There's definite risk. Like I said, they haven't, these park owners haven't filed a just and reasonable return application in 10 years. You know, they could very well reply that, well.
Why don't we see if we have three votes?
But anyway.
Okay.
Okay, well, we could talk about it, can't we, Ed?
We're going to.
You don't mind?
All night.
You know?
Can I ask for just, Councilmember Jones, rather than report back on September 27th, can you amend your motion to a motion to direct staff to ask owners to lower the rate for this year, hopefully to 5%, and continue this item to September 27th? Just for administrative purposes.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's my motion then.
Okay.
Very good. Any other comments, any other discussion?
I have a question regarding what the city attorney just said. Is it continuing the item means you're just not, you still have to vote on it, but.
Absolutely. You still have to vote on it, but you're, but you're going to be continuing this item. You're only giving us, it's like partial direction.
Okay.
You're directing us to do something, and then we're continuing this, just for administrative purposes, to continue the item.
Okay, thank you.
And one more comment. I see Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I concur with your thoughts. It doesn't hurt to ask. Maybe we'll get somewhere. And yes, it's at risk, but I'm sure the owners, they could say no, they could say yes. Let's give them the option.
Very good. Mr. Jones has called for the question. I think we are done speaking. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bildelapena?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Very good.
We're trying to be of help, audience.
The, the council now goes on to business. We have our city managers report on what's coming up.
Yeah, in addition to this item, in two weeks, we do have a item of significance that night, so a presentation update from our homeless ad hoc committee on homeless efforts and a potential navigation center consideration. So we'll also receive an update from our council members that attended the League of California Cities Conference. That's on the 27th, two weeks from tonight.
Very good. We will be going into closed session, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Noonan for just one second.